All right, I'm calling this meeting to order of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education Special Board Meeting for May 3, 2021. Superintendent, can you please take role?
Yes, Member Pritchett.
Here.
Member Morowski.
Here.
Member Wu.
Present.
Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Villa.
Here.
Member Rhodes.
Present.
And Member Phillips.
Present.
All right, perfect. And Item 2.0, public comment, Ms. Moretti?
We have one speaker, David Fisher, and he's combining time with Nikki Malewski and Cindy Fisher.
Okay.
Hello, this is David Fisher, President of Sacramento City Teacher Association. I'm combining my time this evening with Nikki Malewski and Cindy Stewart, and also Carla Fawcett from SEIU. During the April 22 school board meeting, the Sacramento City Teachers Association expressed its appreciation for the majority of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education for rejecting the recommendation of Superintendent Aguilar, Chief Business Officer Rose Ramos, and Sacramento County Office of Education Superintendent Dave Gordon in certifying Sac City's second interim budget as negative. Instead, the majority of the school board voted to certify the budget as qualified. The decision of the majority to certify the budget as qualified was, as you know, itself a conservative determination since the second interim budget met the standard to be certified as positive because the district will meet its ending unrestricted reserve fund balance in the current budget year and the subsequent two years. To meet the standard for a qualified certification, the district, quote, "may be able to meet its financial obligations for the current fiscal year or two subsequent fiscal years," end quote. The district's 2020-2021 second interim budget projects Sac City meeting its financial obligations for the current year and the subsequent two years. Since the Sac City budget was first rejected in August 2018, the Sac City School Board has approved 13 budgets, including all the revised first interim, second interim, and third interim, and has received two end-of-the-year unaudited actual reports, 2018, 19, and 1920. Despite projecting imminent fiscal insolvency throughout the 2018-19 school year, the district ended the year with nearly a million-dollar surplus. The year 2019-20 repeated the same inaccurate budgeting. The district projected a $12.3 million deficit in unrestricted fund while actually ending the year with $23.6 million surplus. This year, the projections have been even more inaccurate. The original budget in July projected a $75 million deficit. The second interim budget now projects a $4.8 million surplus. More significantly, since its third interim budget in 2018-19, Sac City has submitted 10 budgets, each of which has met the standard to be as qualified rather than negative. As mentioned above, the 2020-2021 budget met the standard to be certified as positive, and yet, in every instance, Superintendent Aguilar, with the support of SCOWI Superintendent Gordon, has chosen to certify those budgets as negative. In our comments on April 22, we expressed our appreciation to the majority of the board for providing a more accurate description of Sac City's financial status and asked how Superintendent Aguilar and the three board members who voted against the majority could justify continuing to mislead our community regarding the soundness of Sac City's budget. To her surprise, Board President Pritchett not only defended misleading the public, but went on further to reveal that Sacramento County Office of Education had taken the extraordinary step of reversing the decision of the majority of the Sac City's Board of Education by unilaterally certifying the budget as negative. Such an unprecedented action by SCOWI to overturn a sound and defensible decision by a majority of the school board certainly should have warranted a public discussion, and we would have expected that the school board would have exercised its authority to appeal Superintendent Gordon's decision to the state superintendent Tony Thurman as provided by Ed Coles. Superintendent Gordon's April 12, 2021 letter reversing the decision of the majority of Sac City School Board of Education to certify the budget as qualified was not even disclosed to the public and was not made public or discussed as an agenda item either at the April 15 or April 22 school board meeting. Upon learning of the letter via President Pritchett's comment, SETA made a Public Records Act, PRA. RPI revealed that in sharing Superintendent Gordon's April 12 letter, Superintendent Aguilar, previously undisclosed board communication, made no mention of the district's right to appeal Superintendent Gordon reversing it. Moreover, Board President's offhanded reference to Gordon's letter occurred after the timeline for making such an appeal had already lapsed. The query made on April 22, 2021 still stands. How does Superintendent Aguilar, Chief Business Officer Ramos, and three members of the school board who voted against certifying the budget as qualified justify misleading the public about the true status of the Sac City budget? And if the same group has such confidence in the financial acumen of the district's current administration, why is it willing to support actions that perpetuate oversight from SCOWI, reinforcing the public perception that Sac City cannot be trusted to manage its own finances, as well as spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of unrestricted general fund that are being spent on SCOWI's oversight costs rather than being spent on students? After a decade of inaccurate budgets that project deficit spending, Sac City has generated an unprecedented surplus resulting in $93 million reserve fund, largest in Sac City history. In addition, Sac City is receiving $313 million in additional state and federal funding related to the COVID relief. Today's Sac City has a once-in-a-generation opportunity to work with SETA and SEIU to make Sac City into the district our community deserves. Withholding critical information and creating a false impression of the district's finances doesn't serve our community well. Thank you.
Well, thank you, David Fisher, for that comment. Item 3.0, special presentation, adopt proposal for PK to conduct family survey. Member Garcia, can I hand it over to you?
Sure, and I am going to hand it over to Board Member Sheik. We're dividing the presentation into three parts, and we each have a part, so I'll go ahead and turn it over.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. I'm just gonna sort of cover the background as to the formation of the committee and sort of what we're doing here. So just to start out, AB 86 was signed by the governor and appropriates $4.6 billion to school districts to support expanded learning grants and opportunities to mitigate the learning loss that we've experienced in the past year due to COVID-19, and those funds are to be spent through August 2022. So this summer, the school year, and the following summer. AB 86 requires districts to adopt a plan by June 1 describing how those expanded learning opportunities will be funded. It requires, quote, "a description of how parents, teachers, and school staff were involved in the development of the plan." An expenditure plan template was developed by CDE for districts to use. And so, Member Garcia requested that we come up with an ad hoc committee to engage the community in the formation of this plan. In March, President Pritchett created that committee to seek input from a group of stakeholders in each of the seven trustee areas to inform our district's development of the expanded learning opportunities plan. And the goal is to enhance community involvement with specific input from each trustee area and to report back to the board and superintendent by May 20 or sooner for consideration. Additional board requests, including that the ad hoc committee remains sensitive to the LCAP PAC work and encourage meant that the ad hoc study their recommendations as well as other shareholder recommendations closely so that the efforts are complementary of and not contradictory or supplanting of their efforts. And so, the work is meant to add to the work that district staff is already doing, sort of in coordination. And with that, I'll pass it to Member Garcia.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that we have the PK team here to answer any questions that board members may have, technical or otherwise, so that we can make sure that everyone has the information that they need. So just a little bit on describing the work that the ad hoc committee did in partnering with PK. So the ad hoc committee met on a weekly basis to discuss the best way to expand parent community engagement, especially from parents that we don't often hear from. I think that was something that was important to the board. And concluded that the best way to meet this goal was to partner with a CBO, a community-based organization, with community roots and expertise in community engagement. So the ad hoc committee met with PK, the Parent Institute for Quality Education, which is a statewide organization with expertise in community engagement and empowerment. PK also has expertise in conducting surveys and reaching out to parents in meaningful and authentic manner and meeting them where they're at, often through labor-intensive phone surveys. So I know that's something that's important to some of our colleagues here on the board, making sure that we reach out to parents where they're at and not rely...
Member Garcia, I don't, I think maybe your internet is lagging a little bit.
So the ad hoc committee also worked with PK to reach as the LCAP, so you can be the African-American Advisory Board. Oh, no, did I freeze?
Yeah, you froze it for probably about 15 seconds. Are you there? Member Rhodes or student Member Sheik, would you like to kind of pick up where she left off until we can get Member Garcia back?
I'm back.
Oh, okay, yay!
Am I back? Sorry. It's been happening to me all day.
Don't worry.
Anyway, I think I left off sort of working with the, to develop the set of questions that are aligned with key stakeholder recommendations, such as LCAP Parent Advisory Committee, the African-American Advisory Committee, the American Indian Education Program, also the Community Advisory Committee, the District English Learners Advisory Committee, and the Student Advisory Council. So just really wanting to make sure that we were as inclusive as possible of existing recommendations. And in addition, we worked with PK to incorporate some of the questions from the recent LCAP PAC survey that's currently been, it's currently in the field, seeking parent feedback. So again, the goal is to hear from a broader representation of parent voices and ensure that the input adds to the work that the district staff is already doing. So I know that was really important and that this, that this input is qualitative in nature, and it is very focused on parents. So with that, I'll go ahead and pass it on to Board Member Rhodes so that he can describe what's in the proposal.
Thank you, Board Member Garcia. Okay, so I was really excited to be part of this group and thinking about how we further look at how we engage our communities here in Sacramento Unified School District and thinking it systemically. And this, I believe, is a good start to the continued work that we're gonna do as a board. But the proposal itself, if the board approves, PK will reach out to 500 parents of our LCFF unduplicated students, that means low-income English learners, homeless and fostered youth, and conduct a survey via phone, personalized texts, and emails in English and Spanish. And per board direction, this will be done in every trustee area. PK will provide data analysis to the board and district by May 18 to help inform the financial expenditures plan. And then also, the analyst, the analysis will also help the ad hoc committee determine next steps for longer-term community engagement. I mean, I think that's a big piece, how we kind of map into the future of what we want to do as a board and start critically thinking about how we take this information and inform that data that we can take and really kind of maneuver best for our communities. And so, that's what kind of entails the proposal. And once again, I'm very excited. I want to also thank my other two colleagues who were with us on this journey, but also want to give a big shout out to Member Garcia. She spearheaded this and was, was a light to be able to work with in this space and her knowledge and expertise, and then also being able to find out and pick where we, when we needed to turn and pivot and move direction that way. So I was very humbled to be able to work with her and see her expertise in the field, and I look forward to working with her and all my other colleagues in the future. So thank you, guys, for letting us present to you today.
Great, all right.
Now, Pritchett, back over to Member Garcia or Board President Pritchett.
Go ahead, Member Garcia.
Yeah, so I just, I just, first of all, want to thank you for that. So that was very humbling. I had a lot of, you know, we worked on this together, we supported each other, you know, very strongly, so I want to appreciate the work. So just in terms of what's next, as you, as what was included in the, in the agenda packet, this proposal is for $20,000 to, again, to, to reach out to parents, a broader representation of our parents, and it's, it's all the work that is encompassed in, in, in a survey, which is PK will train their, their parents to reach out to Sac City Unified Parents off of a list. The, the district staff is already working on that list. There have been some data runs so that we can ensure that all trustee areas are covered and also ensuring that all the questions are, PK would, would work with district staff to ensure that the final framing of the questions is what we need in order to, to align the input with, with the work that the, with the, that the district staff is working on. And then lastly, another important piece is ensuring that PK will be working with our communications team to send, to draft communications to our principals so that our principals can notify our parents that we, the district partnered, hopefully partnered with PK to seek additional input. So when they get a call, to please participate, right, because their input is, is very much needed. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over for board member questions and discussion. And again, the PK team is here to answer any questions or fill in any gaps that the ad hoc committee may have left off. So, thank you.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item? No, no public comment. Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, Member Garcia, can you, so on the paperwork that we got, there's three different proposals. It's the $20,000, the last one on the form, that's the one that the committee is recommending?
Yes, we are recommending the last one. That was the last updated one based on updated timelines and getting so close to the actual deadline to make sure that the board has a data, the data analysis by May, May 18. So that's the final proposal for the board to consider.
Okay, and can you tell me what languages will be used for this process as well?
Yes, so we, we discussed this quite a bit in the ad hoc committee, and we decided, due to the abbreviated timeframe, that it made sense to just do English and Spanish, given that we, it's the, I guess, the largest language spoken by many of our households and many of our students other than English. And then the breakdown of that, we wanted to make sure that at least 60% of the, of the parents that would be targeted would be English-speaking parents so that we can make sure that we, we cover all trustee areas, and then the other 40% are Spanish speakers. I think if we had more time and, you know, hopefully moving forward, we would be able to really reach out to many other, you know, parents and households that, that speak other languages other than Spanish. But I think for purposes of meeting our timeline, we needed to make a decision, and we are recommending just English and Spanish.
Okay, I have a high Russian population in my area, and I know I spoke into you a little bit about that, Member Garcia. And I was wondering if, how we were gonna incorporate that, if we were going to be able to. And so, okay, that answers my question. I do have another question about the LCAP and the interaction between the two, but I'll get the board member comments first. Member Villa, and then Member Morowski.
So the survey, we see these questions, or what is our end goal with the kind of responses? What are we looking for? What are we going to do with that data? Because it is a decent amount of money for who we're contacting. I just want to make sure that, if we have to do an FRP, is this going to be just something we take the information back? That's my question.
So I think the major themes of the questions are in access to technology, both devices and connectivity. It's still an issue for many students. We also are going to focus on mental health needs, also any academic supports, and as well as questions about, there was another, another one, and I invite my colleagues, if they recall what the, I think there was a fourth one. Oh, and I, and, you know, in future community, parent community engagement, so.
Will there be a section in there for folks to give more information versus say, just to check yes or no? So I want to make sure if we're sending this kind of survey out, how much information are we collecting? And again, what are our hopes with this data?
Yeah, and you know what? I'm going to ask someone from PK to answer that question because then that gets into how the survey is conducted. And with the parents that we targeted, many of them will do a phone survey. Some of them will do a different, will be surveyed in a different manner, but maybe they can add from their, their experience. I mean, they have a lot of experience in conducting these surveys, but I'll go ahead and hand it over to Gloria.
Thank you, everybody. Good afternoon. Gloria Corral, I'm president and CEO of Parent Institute for Quality Education. It's wonderful to have been in these conversations in partnership with the ad hoc committee and specifically about the question. So the purpose of this conversation was to finalize those questions. And so, the, I'll give you an answer, two ways to think about it. One is that open-ended questions can be very challenging to, to analyze because you, because they're open-ended. And so, by virtue of having that as an option, it's always an option, it's just the kind of data that you might get is obviously not representative. However, it does allow for people to bring up a different, you know, another issue that might be of importance. And so, that process of finalizing those questions, I'm sure Member Garcia and the ad hoc will be taking your feedback and your, and your suggestions. So that's just one, one way to think about the, the survey questions, really, that open-ended questions can be really challenging for us to be able to give you a sense in the aggregate. The other really important element to this is that because of the way that we do the work, we typically, we have had a lot of experience in reaching out to families, and so typically, that is a dialogue that really enables you to support families that wouldn't otherwise be familiar with doing surveys or may not become familiar with the technology for them to be, having a conversation in a way that is much more accessible. And so, in that way, we, in the conversations we've had, we wanted to be able to turn something around very quickly so that it can inform your decision-making process. And so, we would say that, that the questions that, that have been discussed thus far are intended to give you a sense of priorities, those things that are most important, recognizing that you, you have decisions that are pending, that this additional, these additional perspectives would help you kind of put it in the context of all the other input that you've been receiving from the other, from the other venues that you've been engaged with.
Thank you, Gloria.
Member Villa, did you stow your hand up? Sorry.
So again, what, when we get that data, and I want to be clear, this is a $20,000 contract for reaching out to 100 families and creating this process. What are we going to do with that data in the end? Just, I want to make sure that I'm really clear on what this process is.
So I will get, I will start. So it's reaching out to 500 families. Yeah, 500 families, so it's, it's more than that. And again, I think at this, at this moment in time, we are trying to be as efficient as possible, given the short timeframe, but still not lose sight of having an opportunity to reach out to a broader community of parent voices, which, you know, we were all committed to when we, you know, when we supported the creation of the ad hoc committee. So for, I think for this first step, I will call it a first step, we are doing mostly closed, I guess, questions, what you, I guess that's what you would call. And again, it's because we really tried to stay aligned with many of the recommendations that were made by multiple stakeholders through standing committees through our district, and also really trying to stay aligned with the work that the LCAP is doing. So as was, as was part of our direction, so, so we just really focused on that. I think, again, in the future, in terms of when we think of community engagement, we should have a broader conversation, more open-ended questions. But for purposes of this proposal, we, we needed to keep that very narrow and aligned with the work that's already happening so that when the work comes back, the analysis, it is, it is aligned with the work that staff is already doing so that they can easily take it into consideration or incorporate it into that final expenditure plan that will come before the board for, for approval. And I don't know, Gloria, if you want to add anything more than that, or any of, either of my colleagues, based on the conversations that we had, but just wanted to make sure that, that was clear.
All right, Member Morowski.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm excited to see this proposal. I wanted to, to thank you, President Pritchett, for, for taking this step and, you know, realizing we, we need to do more on community engagement and maybe be, you know, be strategic in how we make sure to reach out to those unrepresented voices. And I just wanted to thank the, the members of the ad hoc committee, especially Member Garcia, for spearheading, I guess, the, the project of how, how to take these steps forward. I think this is, this is a really important issue for making sure we have not just community engagement, but meaningful community engagement across all of our different parent stakeholders. I know, you know, in the past, I've tried to do a lot of community engagement myself, and, you know, it's, it's hard to, it really takes a lot of effort, and you need extra help to be able to make sure you're being representative to, because, you know, a lot of times when we reach out or just put something out there, we are only getting those, those parents or stakeholders who are really empowered already enough to, you know, meaningfully respond to a survey. So I think it's really important to recognize, we do have to chase that, that community engagement to really make sure it's representative. So I appreciate it. I guess one of the, the comments I would have about, and I don't know, you know, how the questions are structured, I trust the, you know, the, the district team and the members of the ad hoc group who's working with PK and their expertise to, you know, be able to structure those in a, a way that will get meaningful data back. I guess the one thing that I would want to be sure of is to recognize that, you know, I think in, what often gets lost in thinking about, you know, priorities or what people want to see is the costs and benefits and the kind of the scale of the cost versus benefits for different things. So something might be important, but, you know, if it's, if it costs 10 times more than something else, you know, is it 10 times more important? You know, so I think those kinds of things, you know, when we're talking about how you allocate resources, it's really important to really get a clear sense of like, you know, it may not be the most important thing, but maybe it's an important thing that we can do for a low cost versus something that's extremely, extremely costly and also might be a priority. So I don't, you know, I, I hope the PK team and the ad hoc committee members can sort of get at what I'm saying. I don't, I don't exactly know how, you know, how to structure the questions in that way, but I just want to be sure that we get back information that really gives us a sense of, you know, how we should best allocate resources to meet the need. how we should best allocate resources to meet the need. So again, just appreciate everyone's work. I'm happy to, to move it at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Morowski. Member Wu.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that when we're done, we'll be able to extrapolate this to our Hmong communities, our Chinese communities, our Asian-speaking communities because we're making a concerted effort not to reach out to them. And I, I, I'm hoping that, you know, many of the Hmong share the same types of concerns that the Spanish do, but I can't be certain. So I'm, I'm hoping and trusting that you will, you will put some effort into it.
Thank you, Member Wu. Yeah, I wrote down the same thing. I do have some concerns that right now, the, what's on the table is the proposal from PK. And, but just kind of on the side, Member Garcia, maybe you can maybe let the board know like what the plan is from the, from the committee to continue the efforts to maybe reach out to the API, Middle Eastern and Russian communities.
So I, we did have a conversation that I think if time was on our side, the original goal was to have PK maybe partner with many other community-based organizations that represent and have roots in those particular communities so that together, a survey of question, the questions could be drafted that are, you know, culturally sensitive and relevant. So, so that was sort of like the ideal, right? And, and we have plenty of time. But again, because of the abbreviated timeframe and knowing that we would be able to get, you know, input from, from a pretty significant part of our community, even though they're just, they're English-speaking, speaking parents or households or Spanish-speaking, that we would still be able to, to receive valuable input. But I think moving forward, that's why we want to, we are looking forward to that analysis. And then going back to the AdHoc Committee to find out what are the next steps that need to be made towards, towards strengthening our community engagement in Sac City. We, we recognize that district staff is at capacity. So this is, this is bringing in additional support and resources that are, and investing in our communities, but also making sure that are being helped, that the information is helpful to, to district staff. So, so I think that's, that's maybe step number two. But for purposes of tonight and step one, we unfortunately were not able to be as comprehensive, comprehensive as and inclusive as we would have liked to. Okay. Superintendent, maybe you can answer this question. I'm just wondering what the work that the LCAP PAC is doing with surveys is relatable to this, correct?
Yes, it is. And in my discussions with the AdHoc Committee, they were very open to the idea that we did want to be sensitive to the fact that our LCAP PAC, for example, and other stakeholder groups, other district advisories have really spent a lot of time unpacking what our system looks like, if you will, and providing a lot of input in preparation for our ELO proposal, our LCAP as well. And, and I appreciate the AdHoc Committee's commitment to that. I'll just add a couple of things. In terms of working with the AdHoc Committee in preparation for whatever method is used and whoever is actually used to advance this work, we would prepare a randomized identification process. So certainly, we would include families from every trustee area. We would distribute the selection and identification of families by segments. So we thought about about 50% of our families coming from elementary, about 20% coming from middle school and about 30% coming from our high schools. Within that, you know, division of seven trustee areas, the distribution by segment, we also would be sensitive to the distribution of our LCFF count, making sure that we have an accurate distribution. About 70% of our families that we would select randomly would be low-income. For example, of that group, we have thought and we discussed with the AdHoc Committee the importance of distributing that, that, that population by English-speaking versus non-English-speaking so that we could capture within the English-speaking distribution of maybe 60% any, any, any student or any family, of course randomly selected, that speaks English. So not necessarily, so it wouldn't exclude, for example, a family of, of say, Russian descent who speaks English or of Asian descent who speaks English. They are still included in the random selection, if you will. But where maybe 40% would be students who, whose home language isn't English. And all of that is driven by our data, our Student Information System, Infinite Campus. So we, we have worked with, with the AdHoc Committee to make sure that we do our best to do a random selection of families. And of course, we would want to communicate with our entire community so that if they do receive a telephone call, then they, they expect it and, and they know that it is sponsored, if you will, by the district. I'm very supportive of anything that is complimentary and produces more, more responses. We have been very active over the past couple of weeks asking our community in general to provide us feedback for our LCAP plan. And we've included questions for our ELO proposal. This weekend, in my own message to our staff, I asked our staff to provide feedback as well. And so this would be complimentary by identifying an additional 500 families that would, that would fill out this, that would complete this survey.
Okay. And of course, our legal, Raul was on. Maybe he can answer. I just want to make sure that with the $20,000 proposal that we would not, we would be, we would not have to do a request for proposal, correct?
That's, that's correct. Board President, correct. That's the, the amount that's within the, the parameters delegated to the superintendent and, and the, and CBO to enter into that agreement.
Okay, all right. I want to make sure that we're following those rules. All right, is there any other board comments or questions? Member Morowski.
I am so sorry. I forgot to verify the, the funding source. Is that coming from the AB86 funds? That funding pot itself? I assume so.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to verify. Thank you.
All right. Member Garcia, do you want to kind of wrap us up on this one? I just, you know, this is just, again, the work that we were tasked to do. And I hope I'm, we're, we're all excited to have this proposal before us. And we think it's a small step with significant impact for our community engagement. So we are just asking for the board's support in moving this forward. All right. Fantastic. Thank you for that. This is an action item. So I'll ask Superintendent, roll call for student member Shay for your student parental vote.
I think we need a motion.
Oh, yes. You're right, we do. Thanks, Lisa. I have a motion in a second.
I'm so moved.
I knew I was forgetting some. Thank you. All right, student member Shay.
Aye.
All right, Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Morowski.
Aye.
Member Wu.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to the report back. All right, item 4.0, public hearing. 4.1, public hearing adopt revision of board policy 5113, absences and excuses. Ms. Flores and student member Shay. Hi, Victoria.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. We're, we're here to present with, to you the adopt, adopting revision of board policy 5113, absences and excuses. And student board member Shay is going to take the next slide.
Thank you. So this is sort of circling back on a conversation this board had back when its composition was different. So back on December 10th, I had brought a resolution, Board Resolution 3174 to this board regarding excused absences for mental health. And so we passed that unanimously, essentially taking this ed code and board policy that had existed, that describes personal illness or injury as one of the primary reasons for excused absences and extending that to mental health. And so Ms. Flores and I worked along with our legal team to update that in the board policy. And so just a little bit of background information, I think we all sort of have come to the conclusion that mental health is on equal footing with physical healthcare. And that's defined in legislation such as the 2008 Federal Mental Health Parity and Addiction Equity Act. And before I pass this on to Ms. Flores, I would just sort of remember that back when this discussion initially came to the board with, in the form of a resolution, Members Garcia and Minnick had brought up the idea that we wanted this to not just be, you know, not just be an extension of the attendance policy, but also include language that when there's a pattern of excused absences coming under this, under this name, under this label, that site-level attendance teams or somebody else would take care of this and take note of it and reach out. And so Ms. Flores and I were intentional in including that language in our updated policy. And you'll see that at the bottom of the page in your packet. With that, I'll pass it back to Ms. Flores.
And next slide, please. Yeah, so as you'll see, and student board member Shay just said, you know, to recognize the impact of mental health issues and really to help reduce that stigmatizing attitudes of prejudice and exclusion. The definition of health reasons in the context of excused absences is going to be expanded to include both physical and mental health. There haven't been any prior updates to this board policy since 2002. So it was also another good time to take a look. And this just really ensures that our policies reflect the values and the, really the ethics that we hold around supporting mental health and wellness. And so with that, we ask you to consider, you know, adopting this new language.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No, there's no public comment.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, both of you, for working on this. We have been speaking a lot on this board about our employees' mental health. And I'm really happy to see that we are incorporating our students in these talks as well. You know, our students have been home for a long time and their mental health is going to be very important that we are able to spot out warning signs as they are coming back into the classroom. Do we have any other board comment? All right, well, this is a first reading. Oh, Member Rhodes, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I, I fully support this. And I wish this wasn't a first reading and we could just pass it today. Because it's, it's that much needed. And, and, but Mr. Shay, you, you're doing, this is fabulous, you brought this forward. I wasn't here when it was originally brought forward. I got to watch it. But I'm going to be very happy to be able to vote on this. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. All right, this is a first reading. So we will bring this back in a short time. Thank you so much for your work on this. All right, item 4.2, public hearing adopt revision of board policy 5141.52, suicide prevention. Mr. Bozio.
Thank you, President Pritchett. Good evening, Board of Education Superintendent. We're here for another first reading to some proposed revisions to our board policy 5141.52, suicide prevention. And again, here, I'm, I'm joined tonight with, with Victoria Flores, our Director of Student Support and Health Services. This policy revision has, has a few updates to it. Primarily, I, I would say that one revision is required by our, our recent FPM, the Federal Program Monitoring Review, as we brought you a, a couple of other board policies recently. One piece of this policy was cited as requiring some update, and that is to make clear that the policy applies not just to secondary students, but to, to all of our students, elementary, in addition to secondary students. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Flores, who can talk a little bit about the district's efforts on, on this topic and can tell you a little bit more about the policy.
Good evening. So thank you so much. And Board President Pritchett, you know, your comment about the need to recognize and identify the mental health, you know, needs of our students led right into this. So, so suicide is the second leading cause of death for, for young people ages 10 to 34. And that's been consistent and continues to creep up. In Sacramento County, roughly over 20% of high school students report seriously considering suicide. And some of that is data from our own Healthy Kids Survey. And knowing the warning signs and how to get help really does save lives. Being brave and asking that question that many of us who, you know, know and love young people might struggle to want to ask because sometimes we don't want to know the answer. And suicide prevention really requires a comprehensive public health approach, much like this pandemic, right? So we've got to educate everyone, students, parents, community members. We've got to reduce stigma and make it safer and more comfortable to talk about. We've got to identify, intervene, and have lots of resources for our students and our families. Next slide, please. So education code, oh, I think we went, there we go, does require that we have a policy. We, we had a really large work team of students and families and community partners who helped us draft. And I think we have a really strong, beautiful board policy, if I can use that descriptor. And, and so our current board policy was adopted and established in 2018. Next slide, please. And much like Raul discussed, the, the one big, you know, piece that we needed to revise in here was to include that language of K-12. Back in 2018, it was really talking about seventh through 12th. However, I will say that our policies and procedures around suicide risk assessment span the whole, you know, gamut of, of students. And we've done risk assessments on fairly young students. But this is talking about the education that we provide in classrooms about identifying feelings and, and being safe and starting to speak about how to share those feelings and, and identify when students need, need some support. So next slide, I think maybe that might take us into question. Yep, that was the end. So, so we respectfully ask you, you know, to consider also passing these revisions to this board policy.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Do we have any public comment?
No, there's no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. And I agree, Victoria, this is definitely goes hand in hand with the prior revision of our policies. Are there any other board member comments, questions? All right. Well, we look forward to having both of these back and working. Oh, Member Garcia. Yeah, I, I just wanted to, I think both of these two board policy, I guess, changes are timely, especially as we're going to enter summer school, hopefully, and then the next school year with this as being, you know, a number one priority and it's just a front and center issue. So thank you. The board policy is very comprehensive. So I was really, really happy to read all that. I do, I appreciate the striking law enforcement from, from the language. That was, I was, I was happy to see that. I did have a couple of just, just minor, I think, suggestions. I did have a couple of just minor, I think, suggestions. I think this may be a typo, but maybe not. Maybe this is a word I just don't know. In the first paragraph, according to the National Center for Health, I think it's statistics, but it's a different word. I crossed it off, so I don't know. So I think that word needs to be changed. And then a question about, you know, the grades. I know technically, transitional kinder is the first year of a two-year kinder, you know, grade. But I'm wondering if we can just spell it out, too. I think we need to be inclusive and if we can do TK to 12, that would be, I think, I think it's important. So, but I just wanted to give staff kudos for all this work and with the prior board policy as well. So thank you.
Great, are there any other comments or questions?